That's what I'm asking, man. We've got seven o'clock Central Standard Time. Call this November twenty-fourth, regular Board of Education meeting to order. Nikki, please call the roll.
Nikki Austin, present. Jim Burn.
Present.
Mike Davis.
Present.
Nicole Josephs.
Teresa Keen, present.
Steve Mayer.
Present.
Terry Montgomery's absent. Phil Vosper.
All right, with that, we've got a quorum. We're officially in session. First up on the agenda is the approval of our agenda for tonight. Entertain a motion.
So moved.
Nicole. Motion by Nicole.
Second.
Second by Steve. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose nay. Motion carries. All right, we've got our consent agenda for tonight. Any board member would like to remove anything to pull it out of the consent items? No? If not, I would entertain a motion to approve our consent items as presented.
So moved.
Motion by Nikki.
Second.
Second by Phil. Go ahead and read these for the record. You've got this, Jim. Okay. I don't want any mispronunciations. We've got the approval of the minutes from October twenty-seventh. Approval of support staff hiring Talia Liphart, educational assistant. Approval of support staff retirement, Terry Dower, educational aide at Parkstead Elementary School. And we've got a very long and exciting list to approve and accept community donations. First, a full pallet of structural steel for welding practice and four rolls of welding wire donated to technology and engineering classes by Coon, North America, Broadhead. Two two-hundred-and-fifty-dollar gift cards to two families with food security needs from Green County beef producers. We've got Backpack Buddies Program. I'm gonna read all these out. I just wanna name, on the front end, we are incredibly grateful for the tremendous support for this really critical service and program. First, five thousand dollars from my senior Thomas F. Campion Charitable Fund. Thirty-five-hundred dollars from an anonymous donor. Three thousand ninety dollars from Saint John's United Church of Christ. Two thousand dollars from Michael and Jacqueline Stout-Netzle. One thousand dollars from Paul and Kathy Gregerson. Five hundred and eleven dollars from Ally Langcamp. Five hundred dollars from Terry Faith. Five hundred dollars from Eugene and Susan Curran. Three hundred and fifty dollars from Duckstead McDaniel Law Group. Three hundred dollars from Christine Mueller. Three hundred dollars from Judith Huber. Two hundred and ninety-four dollars from Timothy Pettit. Two hundred and fifty dollars from Marge Cleansing. We've got nine two-hundred-thousand, sorry, two-hundred-dollar donations, excuse me, from Eastern Star Alpha Center. Thomas and Karen Vale. David and Petra Smith. Gregory and Karine Olson. Din and Nicole Saunders. Dennis and Diana Hostek. James and Karen Frymiller. Davis Foundations Incorporated. Carrie and Ann Bush. Four hundred and fifty-dollar donors. James and Veronica Bruce. Kathy and John King. Patty and Jerry Castleberry. And Jim and Julie Yagi. Hundred-dollar donations, fifteen of them. John and Sue Patterson. Michael and Mary Davis. Joyce Martin. Lisa Gellings. Urban and Kathy Peters. Astrid Wunschel. Ellen and Samuel Matheson. Michael and Janet Schuda. Angela Worth. Mike and Julie Teesdale. David and Tracy Reckley. Blaine and Nicole Einbeck. Janet Arroyo. Jane and Rudy Bootcher. Annette and Pat Holmstrom. Three seventy-five-dollar donors. Brittany and Derek Morgan. Sharon Norton Baumann. Thirteen fifty-dollar donors. Michael and Deborah Hutchinson. Thomas and Mary Lou Dalton. Robert and Deborah Rupke. Joanne Hare. Patricia Gregory. Mary Fredericks. Jocelyn Klein in memory of Janice Rosenstiel. Diane Halverson. Barbara Mantai. Kelly and Dustin Huffman. Brian and Christine Reed. Galen and Catherine Kubli. Christine Stewart. Forty dollars from James and Karen Johnson. Thirty dollars from Mary Ann Johnson. Twenty-five dollars from Bill and Elaine Bethke. Twenty-five dollars from Paul and Jean Shenicky. Twenty dollars from Barb Buto. Twenty dollars from Paul Romer. Any discussion before we... Well, we've got a motion in a second. Any questions or discussion? Already got the motion in a second. Any comments?
Just, yeah, very appreciative and grateful for those donations.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose nay. Consent items are approved. No public comment tonight? Got nothing for... Oh, sorry, we got our student liaison report. Leanne, you got the floor.
So, last Thursday, one-act play performed the Great Gatsby for state where Miley Ivanovich and Grace Lewis, two seniors, both earned Best Actor awards. Last week, the high school had their third annual food drive where they donated five-hundred-and-ninety-one pounds of food to Green County Food Pantry. And usually, it's a competition between homerooms to see which homeroom could donate the most food, but this year, they also opened it up to the community. Last week, boys' basketball and wrestling began their practices. Girls' basketball was supposed to have a game in Benton, but they had to reschedule from conflicts. And so far, bowling has started their season off with two to zero. Last week was also the end of the first trimester, and today was the first day of the second trimester. And it's a very short week with Thanksgiving break and in-service on Monday. For this week, girls' basketball has a varsity tournament both today and Saturday in South Beloit and a conference game against Elvin Darian tomorrow night, Tuesday. Boys' basketball has a game this Tuesday against Manona Grove and an invitational at Beaver Dam on Saturday. Girls' hockey has their season opener this Tuesday at home, which is in Janesville, and a Thanksgiving tournament on Friday. Wrestling has a home scrimmage this Saturday. Boys' hockey has a tournament against Beloit Fury this Saturday and a Thanksgiving tournament against Beloit on Sunday. And then after break, there's gonna be a lot of Christmas events popping up with, like, theater, band and choir. I'm getting ready for the holiday extravaganza. Band and choir, and I'm guessing maybe, like, basketball will probably be in the Christmas parade. And Model UN this year is hosting a global Christmas event with crafts, games, concessions with food from different countries, and watching a Christmas movie afterwards. That's all I have.
Thanks, Leanne. Any questions for our student liaison? Appreciate the thorough updates. Awesome, okay. We've got nothing for old business. We've got a relatively meaty agenda for new business. First off, we've got two sponsorships to approve. I'll turn it over to Mr. Monroe to give us the context.
Sure. So again, happy to celebrate a couple of sponsorships that we have tonight. The first is with Woodford State Bank. They are sponsoring a courtesy cart. Had a couple people ask, what's a courtesy cart? For those of you that have seen our new high school campus, it's fairly large. There's a lot of athletic facilities. There's a number of areas that will want our community to be able to access. And the community, our courtesy cart will allow us to use volunteers to help community members, students, others that have maybe some mobility needs and a little help getting around the campus. Get from the parking lot to a field or up to the Performing Arts Center entrance or wherever they need to go and just make the campus more accessible. So we're truly excited that Woodford State Bank has agreed to provide ten thousand dollars to sponsor that cart. We believe that it's gonna provide a great service for our community. We wanna thank Scott Nure, President and CEO of Woodford State Bank. He has been very enthusiastic and wanted to be a part of this project. And we looked at a couple of different ideas, and Scott was excited to sponsor the courtesy cart. So we're excited to be able to do this and would ask the board to recommend or to approve this recommendation from administration.
Thanks, Joe. Questions for administration? Just wanna echo the gratitude to Scott and Woodford State Bank, huge community supporters, and to be really helpful for a lot of families, a lot of folks who have, like Joe said, the mobility needs. Entertain a motion to approve the sponsorship of the Monroe High School Courtesy Cart. So moved. Motion by Steve.
Second.
Second by Teresa. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose nay. Motion carries.
Great. We'll go to the next one. Obviously, all of our sponsorships are amazing and special, but this next one truly is special. Was fortunate enough to receive communication from Gunner, Michael Fergel, about desire from the Cecil Jones VFW Post twenty-three-twelve and American Legion Zoma Riley Post number eighty-four. Wanted to sponsor the flagpole installation at the new high school. This was a sponsorship that honestly, when talking to Gunner, said, we'll take a dollar for the sponsorship. We just wanna be connected with you all and make sure that we're honoring the veterans in the area. And they made sure that they were able to raise the five-thousand-six-hundred-and-four dollars to cover the sponsorship, which includes the pole, the lights, everything that goes into it. And so, to be able to accept the sponsorship and honor our veterans and people that have fought for our country and really communicate what it means to serve your country to our current students and future cheesemakers is a big deal. And so, we're excited to bring this forward to the board, and we would recommend that you approve this sponsorship agreement.
Second.
Yeah, motion by Phil. Second by Nikki. Any discussion before we go?
Just a huge thank you, because this comes from an organization that doesn't have unlimited funds.
Yep.
So, I mean, this is a big donation for them. And huge thank you, because it's very important to them.
Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose nay. Motion carries. Next on, or next up, our Monroe High School Building Project update.
Yeah, so I'll turn it over to Ron. Sometimes I jump in and steal his thunder and so...
You can steal my thunder, because I wasn't gonna steal theirs today.
Well, then, I'll just say this. You know, we say this often, there's a tremendous amount of progress being made on the project. You can see it both inside and out. We're excited about where we're at. And while the weather is getting ready to turn on us a little bit, we've been very fortunate to get to the point that we're at. And so, we have Tony from CG Schmidt, Ryan from Huffman Keel here. I don't know if you guys flipped a coin to see who wanted to go first with the update. It's Tony. You're strong-arming him. So, so Tony, you're up. Why don't you tell us a little bit about what's going on from your perspective?
Okay, yeah, great. I'll give you a little overview, and then I think we got some drone footage to share. Is that right? Okay, perfect. So, lots been happening over the last month. I know we say that every, every, every month, but I honestly think this is probably the biggest transformation I've seen in quite a while on this job. It's been... Funny story, I was at a meeting internally with some people higher up the food chain, and I pulled up last month's video, and I'm like, this can't be last month's video. It must be wrong. But it really was. It was only two weeks had gone by since then, and a lot of work has happened. So, it's exciting, but, you know, we're heading towards winter, so there's a lot of risks that come up with that and trying to get asphalt down before the plants close and trying to get as much dirt moved. So, you know, we're pretty much where we wanna be. We could've gotten more stuff done before the big freeze comes, literally like in two days, it seems like. But we struggled through some, some temporary closures and things of that nature. But I will say that we're, we're fully enclosed right now. We have a couple areas where we got some temporary plastic partitions in high-traffic areas, but we got the heat on and heat's pumping into every, every square foot of the building. So, some areas a little too hot, but, you know, we're not quite balanced on everything yet. So, so a lot, a lot of, a lot of good milestones this last month. All the gym equipment's gone in. I don't think anything was in last time we met here. All the asphalt is down, pretty much. We did, all asphalt comes in two layers, a binder course and a finish course. So both layers are on the track and the tennis, and then just binder everywhere else so that we can, next spring, when we kinda finish up and get all of our stuff off-site, freshen up with one last layer. Tile contractor came back on site. He left for a month or so, but some of the big bathrooms are getting done, and they look really great. Couple of these areas, I was just talking to Joel this morning, couple of these areas are really just, you know, some ceiling tile and flooring away from doing punch lists and closing the door and being done. So, it's, you know, casework is installed, countertops are installed, glass is installed, ceiling grids, light fixtures. Some, some areas you walk into, light fixtures are coming on in the rooms, just like they would if you walked into a classroom. So, it's nice to see that, a lot of the electrical and systems, like the heart of the building, as I would say, like back by that loading dock area, I walked through, all the boilers are up and running. Things are really starting to come to life. So, that's all great stuff. Still having a little bit of trouble with some of our procurement, like with glass and stairs, but we're pounding through it. One of the biggest things we did this week, this last month, was pour that commons slab. So, you'll see that on the drone footage. Pour that and then protected it. Just kinda opened up the whole job. You'll see on some of the footage, it almost looks, almost looks messy. It's organized. When you see it, it's like, oh, come, there's, there's a slab there and there's wide open space, like all the materials congregated to that spot. So, that was a huge thing, is getting that slab poured, which made way to get the grand staircase up. So we have this steel up for that as well. You know, outside, the maintenance building has been up. Clearie put that up. The concessions building for football is up, the structure, and then really, the baseball fields have taken a lot of transformation. So, a lot of good things. There's still a fair amount of, you know, risk things we're watching and keeping an eye on as a group, but all things are falling, you know, in plan at this point, so.
What's left for inside concrete slab work?
Inside concrete slab work? We do have a little bit of stair work to do. So, the stair pans for the open staircase and the commons need to be poured yet. And we also need to put the geofome, which is like stacked blocks, and concrete stairs that go from the commons down to the gymnasium level. So that's really the biggest concrete...
Pack, probably, as well.
Yeah, we'll pack the back room.
Yeah, sorry. Yeah, and the pack as well with all the geo, the geofome and block stairs. But that's kinda like, really, sounds weird, but concrete's kinda one of the last things in the Performing Arts Center, because people need to use lifts to get up and to get all the overhead work done, the rough ends, the painting, all that stuff. Then lifts go out. You pour the stairs, you put the seats in, and you button it up, so.
Just that easy.
Yeah. Here we go. So, our superintendent, Jared, built one similar to this, so he's kinda got the sequence figured out, which is great. It's great to have some people on the team that have built this very similar PAC within the last couple years. Any other questions before we get into the drone footage? Otherwise, I'll just add a little bit more flavor when the footage is playing.
So is the school's heat on now?
Yep. So there's a combination of temporary heating units and school units. So, in the areas that are more finished, we are putting the building system up in use. And then like over in Area E, which is the auditorium and the gymnasium, we have some temporary units we've rented to get us through here for a couple months until those systems get up and running.
Tony, I'm curious, when you talk to kinda senior folks at CG, like, what's, what part of the project jumps out to you most? Like, what's, what's your favorite part, or what's kinda the feature of this that feels most unique?
So, you know, it's easy for me to say sports, you know, and the complex with the sports outside, but honestly, that Performing Arts Center is something really cool I've never been a part of. And it's just, that, you walk into that place, and it's, it's just mind-blowing, really, just to kinda see what's happening in there. So that, that's really one of my favorite parts of the building, is that, you know, sometimes teeter between that and the sports stuff, but it is really cool. And then just, when I talk to other people internally, you know, I think there's a lot of positive feedback about this project, just with people that are in Monroe here, people that are up in our company that don't necessarily go off to jobs, they're hearing the buzz and feeling the buzz. And we did a little bit of a lessons learned presentation last week in our office, and there's a lot of excitement, a lot of questions, and just a lot of positivity around the project. It's just great for everybody involved, whether you're trying to learn something for construction or whether your kids are gonna go to school here next year. It's just, it's great to be a part of, but...
Can I add something to that, Tony? So, a couple of us, Jeremy was one, got up early one morning to want, to go to the safety meeting, and Tony mentioned Jared, the superintendent of the project, was talking to probably over a hundred...
Yep.
Employees that were on-site, right? And one of the things that he, he mentioned that I was surprised by was Jared's been in this business for over twenty years. And he said to the group, you know, take a look around, this is probably the most special project that I've ever worked on, and it might end up being the most special of my career. And so I circled back to him later, and I said, did you mean that? Because we just assumed that all, they're all great projects, and he said, no, this, this project is truly that special. And if Jared were here, he would say the plot, that his favorite part of the project is the plaza outside of the stadium, just that big community space to bring people together, and there's a lot of things you can do with it. And it really offers something to the community that most schools don't have. So, I was, I was just really surprised to hear that and excited.
I absolutely agree with the plaza. We do a lot of schools, and you guys know that. And when we brought our team down, you know, six weeks ago or so, the thing everyone walked away with was, this plaza is amazing. Like, this is going to be great. Like, we've done very large schools and very large districts, and they have great athletic facilities in their own right, but just the flexibility and desirability of that space, like, what happened was all of us thinking of all the things you could do with it. Like, you could do this, you could run it out for this, and I could see it for this, and I could, you know, all these type of things. And so, yeah, I think the plaza seems really, really special.
Thanks.
All right, that's good for questions. We might as well run the footage, I suppose, the drone footage, if that's okay? So I don't really speak much to this one. It's got some pretty cool tunes with it. Oh, God, humid it this time. I like it. But this is just the... Yeah, just kinda watch, I think, between, once you get there, between, would be September and, or October, November.
Of year two.
Of year two, yeah.
That seems weird, when the Performing Arts Center wasn't even there.
We did leave one little area without asphalt, or two areas, really. It's kinda where our trailers are. We picked that spot on purpose, just because there wasn't much utilities coming through there, so we could kinda leave a couple of the bigger trailers there till the end. And then we'll pull that out in spring and then asphalt that. Now, there's still more asphalt work to do down in the baseball complex area, but it's kind of like our main haul route in and out of there right now. So we'll just do all that next spring, too. Kind of escort slab. It's done in October, early October. Some of the baseball fields and all the asphalt, and the maintenance buildings up. The track is paved. A lot of topsoil and seeding down. Concessions building for the, the football, the plazas all poured. The ramp up to the plaza's poured. A lot of site work, which, you know, naturally, everybody wants to try to get a lot of stuff done before winter, and everybody was kinda honed in and on the same path to make that happen. So, you know, in a perfect world, we'd be a hundred percent done with everything for site, but that was never realistic from the get-go. So we're happy where we are, with just a minimal amount of big equipment work in the spring. It's kind of just a slower view, slower last lap.
Baseball's going such a long way.
Yeah. So the baseball, actually, the outfield's are seeded already. They just don't have any soil erosion or mulch on top of it yet. Infield mix is done in a couple of those areas, and the sod is down for the practice fields. And there's an infield for the baseball, and then there's a transition for softball that was just spec'd to be sod instead of seed. So, that's all down. They've been watering that as needed so that it's in good shape going into its dormant season. Development to north is coming along, obviously. Maybe you haven't been over there, but the roadway that goes around north side is now open back up. They have the binder course down of asphalt there. They have, they're doing the same thing. They're gonna finish the surface course in the spring, so that's back open. The development are still working on their stuff, which is coming along. I've got some updates from them, I'll share with you tomorrow around, but they're, seem to be consistent with what they communicated to our team over the last month or two, just on some of the things that interact with our group. So, yeah, it's, it's coming along pretty well out there.
From the drone footage, you can start to see how some of their streets or roads are gonna be laying out, too.
Yep. Is there interior footage, one on there, too, or is that, is that all you have? There might be up there, one.
We don't know.
So, you can see, that's all the slab. I was talking about, we covered it up with ramboard right away, because we're trying to protect it from any stains or dicks or dings or nicks in the lifts, but that's all the equipment that... I think what'll happen is a lot of these other areas adjacent were getting painted, so a lot of the equipment came out of those rooms, and we put them in the commons, kind of in the middle, out of the way, so... As you can see, we're kinda gearing up to get that stair done, ready for to go down in the gym. This is one of the areas, we have temporary plastic, of course. That, to the right, that's some of the geofome blocks that are staged there that'll be placed underneath the auditorium steps. Really, right now, you go in here, and it doesn't look like a lot's happening in the auditorium over week to week, but there's a lot of stuff way up high that's being roughed in electrically and things like that. They're kinda out of sight, out of mind. This space is really transformed. There's, there's paint on the walls, all the equipment's basically in, scoreboards are hung, basketball hoops are there. I was walking this morning, and there, some of the plywood for the floor systems being in and being staged, so, yeah.
You feel, are you good, Tony, about mechanicals then, as far as schedule?
Yeah, for the most part, you know, like always, there's a certain point in the project where electricians are, you know, have a lot of stuff to do, and they do, but, you know, we've been talking with them, and they're talking about increasing their manpower and things of that nature. It's just everywhere you go, everybody's looking for power, whether they know that all the systems are up, but electricians can't be in every little spot at every little time. So, we're working on prioritizing that. We have a, kind of an equipment startup meeting weekly with the electrician and HVAC contractor, because there's over a hundred pieces of HVAC equipment that need to be fired up. So, you know, that's, you know, MVP-wise, that's probably my biggest concern, but I'm not terribly concerned about it. But it's a focus of ours, for sure. It's not like they're doing anything necessarily. Big shortcomings. It's just a matter of everything's coming down to the bottle back for them right now.
All right. If you guys wanna look at the dashboard, we are currently referring, if it's caught up with the high school construction, so we're tracking sixty-nine percent complete. That is not time, that's billings, so that we've spent sixty-nine percent of the funds for the construction. CGS Safety Scorecard is up from last meeting to eighty-seven percent. Our remaining owner contingency... Our remaining owner contingency is still above nine hundred thousand dollars, we did have two change orders signed this month, since the last time we met, one was a transfer of funds, that was OCO thirteen, and that was to our owner direct contracts that we have, that we've had a handful of those throughout the project. OCO twelve, though, was a true change order that did pull out of owner contingency, and the lion's share of that was additional soils and excavation work for the tennis court. If you weren't aware, half the tennis court was on a rock shelf, and half of it was on clay, and so it took more effort underground to support those soils, so that we don't have differential movement from one side to the other, so we, we avoided some very, very large costs, and had to pay some costs to get to a workable solution, that should be a long-term, great solution for the, for the tennis court, we had a consultant come in that just does tennis courts, and was super valuable, and worked through it, it was quite the process to come up with a solution, but we got there, and we saved hundreds of thousands of dollars while doing it, which was really great, so, that puts our burn rate at, across the project so far, slightly over thirty thousand dollars a month, and that is pretty spectacular, we were tracking really, really well with, with owner change orders. I'll pause there, just in case anyone has any questions about anything on the dashboard. If not, we can just, over to the budget, a lot of the things that we talked about are reflected here, and just in greater detail, as always, there is an ongoing effort with the district, we met this week, to do some, I'll call it a cleaning up effort of some of the owner direct expenses of, these have been allowances up to this point, but as we start to hone in on the purchases and procurement of some of these owner direct items, these numbers are tightening up, so some of these numbers will adjust in the budget to reflect what we're actually going to be buying, and some dollars will move from maybe one bucket to another, and we'll have that, oh, the conversation probably in January on that, on some of those, when we, we know we need to spend a little more somewhere else, and a little less somewhere else, and, and as those, those dollars move around, so, been working with Joe, and Ron, and Jeremy, and Rich, and the whole team on, it's been a great collaborative effort, and things have been coming together really, really well on the owner direct side, so, yeah, I don't see a lot of, a lot of risk at this point when it comes to owner direct procurement, there's some decisions that need to be made, and, you know, as we move forward, so that's kind of the effort at this point of, is figuring out exactly what we need, and there's always the reality of getting in the building come spring, and realizing we need some things that we didn't think about, because now we're in the building, and new eyes are, hands and ears and brains are in the building, and they say, "What about this?", and we go, "That's a great question, what about that?", and, so there's gonna be some of that, so, just as a heads up, because there always is, but, dollars and cents-wise, we're in a really, really strong position, and it's kind of an exciting spot to be in, to be, to be honest, so.
I'll just say a quick, I'll try to channel Mike Prosser, and just say, thank you for the layout of this, the project sheet, the budget, I know you've gotten multiple rounds of feedback on that, and it is very, it's very accessible, so it's like, it's easy to follow where we're over, where we're under, and the notes, otherwise, I just wanna say it quick, I don't know if that's what Mike would've said, but I will say thank you for...
I'll believe that's what Mike would've said. Well, thank you for that, everything's always a working, iterative process, so, all the feedback is great, so, makes, makes me better at what I do, so.
Any other questions from the board for...
Moving cost, that's, that's been, that's been bid, right?
Yes, we have a, we have a contract out with, with the vendor, so, we're a little ways out, obviously, but we're looking at getting them engaged towards the end of the school year, with materials, and training, and labeling, and organizational system that teachers and staff can work with, to make sure that we're good and organized there, so, that'll be towards the end of the school year.
No, no other questions? Leanne, you got anything?
I don't think so, I think I'm good on this one.
Thanks so much, guys.
Yeah, thank you, have a great Thanksgiving.
Appreciate it.
Oh, wait, we, I, the plan is that we're, since there's only one meeting in December, that we won't be here for the, the meeting in December, but we will be back in January, so, just wanted to make everyone aware.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on to item D, we've got informational item, district and school report card discussion, we'll turn it over to Mr. Brady.
Yeah, you should all have handouts, hopefully everybody made it all the way down to the end, even one for Leanne, Ron, if you want one. Some of this information has already been shared through social media, some of the board members have already seen this information previously, but I did wanna recap and review some of it here at the board meeting, and then we have some new information that Eric Larson just shared last week, that I think is pretty cool, too, so, I'm just gonna kinda walk through, the handout, the first page is the district information, the second page is the breakdown by buildings, we will do more of a building update at our December curriculum meeting, where we'll look at each building and have these guys talk more specifics, and then at that board meeting that night, we'll do a little bit more information on the report card, and break some of the parts of that down for, for the board in December. So, start with the first page, just a quick overview, we have the district that's a four-star rating, exceeds expectation, all three of our elementaries are five-star buildings, which is awesome, first time ever that's happened, and then the middle school is a four-star, it exceeds expectation, and the high school is at meets, but so close, I think a point and a half, or two points away from reaching exceeds expectations.
Taste it, it's right there.
One point three, there you go, Josh. As a district, we went, we grew six points from last year overall, and then the visuals down below there capture what we've talked about and shared before, of just the amount of growth that's happened over the last five years, whereas a district, we've gone in two categories, growth and target groups, from bottom five percentile in all districts across the state, to now near the top ten percentile of all districts across the state, which is quite a, quite a five-year run we have going here of improvement, and we knew that we were one of the fastest improving districts, and one of the things Eric Larson sent me last week was, that over the last five years, we ranked second in the entire state for most improvement for K-12 districts, for an overall score, with seventeen point one growth, and then compared to CISA two K-12 districts, we rank number one overall for most improved in our overall score, so, like, that's, that's an amazing accomplishment, when you look at every district across the state, that's where we fall, and certainly number one for CISA two, which is really impressive, there's a lot of really impressive districts in there, so, as a district, we have some really good information here, and lots of celebrations. Obviously, that all comes from the great work that's happening at the building level, the high school, mentioned, they're less than two points away from exceeding, up ten points, and I'll get to that in a second, in terms of where they fall in comparison to some other districts, their growth score and target group score, you can look at how much they went up when you rank them against other, or high schools across the state, from the eighteenth and twenty-first percentile up to the fifty-third and the sixty-first percentile, a huge jump, we were making progress, but this last year, we took some really big jumps when we look at how we compared to other high schools, so that's awesome. Highest achievement score, growth score and target percentile rank in school history, and then, again, shared from Eric, as he gave us all this information, I was looking at just overall score increases from last year to this year, and I compared that to our Rock Valley and Badger Small high schools, and we grew the most by growing ten points. The average score of all those districts, in some districts, high schools went down, because we know the cut scores changed at the state level, so, a lot of districts were moving up, but the average growth was two point six, and we went up ten, so like, a huge jump at our high school from last year to this year with their overall score, and just a lot of progress, obviously, and a lot of great work happening. At the middle school, rated exceeds, I talked about that, continue to show achievement, percentile rank growth above the fiftieth percentile, I think something that stands out is our eighth grade math scores, that have been evidence-based teaching and learning the last two years, both years were twelve points above the state average, previously, the two years prior was like four points and seven points above the state average, so, the last two years were twelve points above the state average, and over the last five years, the middle schools showed a steady trajectory up, in all areas, that proof that there's progress and consistency happening in that building as well. Mentioned our elementaries, three five-star buildings, we have Abe that we've talked about, Blue Ribbon School, perfect scores, which is pretty cool, when you look at growth and target group, and Abe's amongst the top elementary schools across the state, when you look at their scores, which is amazing. North Side and Park Side, not far behind, when you look at both having the highest scores in school history, North Side's achievement is in the top twenty percent, and they also scored a hundred for math growth, top five percent statewide for growth and target groups, and then Park Side, highest score in school history, five consecutive years of overall growth in terms of overall score, and then they also scored a hundred in math growth, and ranked amongst the top five percent statewide, so, a lot of really big celebrations, cool stuff from all of our buildings, and, and it's happening because our students are doing great work in the classrooms, they're the ones that actually have to do the work in terms of taking the test, and then obviously, our staff and our leaders that have done tons of professional development, reworking systems and schedules, taking on new curriculum, taking on new instructional strategies, and the grading shift, all those things that we've asked staff to do is clearly leading to some really good results, so, super proud of all the work that's happening in the district.
Any quick questions?
This is just awesome, awesome results, I mean, I can't, I think I only have a small part of the picture of all the effort that's gone into this, but, you know, great job, hold the smoke, keep it up.
That's the hard part, you can keep it up, right?
Get that high, you just keep pushing for more, so.
Todd, this is, this is incredible, so, I have one question to the, the overall, second in the state, is that just for targeting growth, like, the graphs that are below, or is that the overall district?
That's the overall score, Eric sent us kind of a spreadsheet of all districts in the whole state, and then a five-year data set that showed how much we've grown from twenty-one to twenty-five.
Improvement in the score over a five-year span for all K-12 districts in the state. I was gonna joke in the ass who's number one, but, doesn't matter, this is...
Do you know, 'cause you have more...
It is a smaller, smaller district, yeah.
But while he's looking that up, seriously, guys, thank you for all of your efforts, you have had so much, I mean, we always have things going on, but we've had a lot of turmoil in the last five years, and you've never let it shift your focus from, let's keep our kids growing every year, year over year, and we just thank you for all the efforts and all of your buildings, it's, it's recognizable and appreciated, so.
Montello.
Montello.
Where's that adding?
They're like, six hundred kids total for the district.
Well, I'll, I'll just say, you know, Todd did a nice job of summarizing, it starts with the students, our, our teachers have, it's been a huge lift, the amount of professional development that they've been engaged in, and, and they weren't always looking forward to it, I think is a fair assessment, but they did it, and looking back, they would say, "Thank goodness we did, because it, it truly did make a difference." Our principals have been incredible, I mean, the work that they do on a daily basis to keep the focus on what matters most, working with the teams, working with the leadership in the buildings, has been incredible, and then, we just need to say, Todd has been an incredible leader in this area, and deserves a tremendous amount of credit, so, we've got a really strong team, thanks for patting Todd on the back there, literally, but it, it feels good for us, because this is how we've always felt about our schools, and we knew that we needed to show and prove that within the report card, even though it was frustrating at times, because we didn't think, we still don't necessarily believe it tells the whole story, but this is, these are the results that this community deserves, and we promise that we're gonna continue to work really hard to, to do our best, and, and give, provide excellence for the community of Monroe.
Any other questions for administration?
Thanks, up, item E is Portrait of a Graduate presentation.
So, I'm gonna give the update on Portrait of a Graduate, so, just a little bit of background, Joe started this last year, I think you had heard about it from, at a meeting, and Scott Carr, someone who came to visit us during our admin retreat over the summer, and he, Joe had worked with the People's Services team, and then, as he transitioned into this position, kind of figuring out, where do we go with this whole process, because it does take quite a bit of work and quite a bit of lift, so, first of all, I have the clicker, there we go, what is a portrait of a graduate? So, if this is a new concept for you, it is pretty straightforward, it's a, it's a basically a vision, it's a roadmap of what do we want all of our students to be able to do by the time that they leave high school, so it's, so that they'll be successful in school, so they'll be successful in life, in, in their career. It involves strategic planning across all grade levels, like, it starts in the very beginning with our 4K students, and what do we want our learners to look like, 4K, fifth grade, all the way up, it includes competencies and skills that we want them to be able to do, and then it will guide, like, what is, like, what does our education look like in Monroe, how can we make that as meaningful as possible? That's a basic idea, so the process involves just simply forming a Portrait of a Graduate Committee, so, last year, Joe had included a lot of People's Services Department, and had talked to some other stakeholders, more so in the secondary, but as I have learned more about it, read more about it, talked to people, and then Todd and I attended a training, what we have learned is that it's really important that this process, kind of, you take your time with it, you go slow, because it does need, it needs to be a very collaborative effort with your community, with your students, staff, everyone that's involved, because you really wanna create this, this vision, like, I'm gonna keep saying that, it's a vision of what we want our district to be, and so, that does involve a lot of, like, listening, a lot of maybe debating on what you think that might be, because everybody comes from a different place, our, we would like on that committee, our business leaders to be involved, we want parents, we want students to be involved, so that, you have a, you have a big group, we were looking at this, and we, maybe we'll have about twenty people, but, again, we will, we'll decide who all those stakeholders will be, we will then determine kind of what those skills and values that are most important to Monroe, the fun part is number four, creating kind of that visual representation of what that will look like, and when I've, I've looked at other districts, everybody has done something a little bit different, which I love, you have to make it what fits Monroe, you know, what, what is unique to us and our community and our values, and then I love number five, about the connecting the portrait to action, so it's not just something, like a poster that you put on the wall, it needs to be something that everybody connects to, like I said, the kindergartners, they know, like, at that level, these are the things that we're looking for, and this is what, this is what my job is going to be at this level, and then you, you put that into practice, and so, like, everybody's basically on the same playing field, and understands what that means for them, so, take an ownership of it, and then you, any strategic planning that the district would do in the future, they, you'll always come back, and this would kind of ground your work, so, it's a really, to me, a really exciting process. So the next part is the timeline and we have a lot going on in the district right now. Um, we've got a big referendum happening in, in the spring. And so we have had a great deal of conversation about this and we wanna make sure that we're not putting too much on our community right now and pulling in different community groups. So we wanna keep this year to more of that research and discovery phase. Um, that I'll, Todd and I will be, um, doing a lot of, uh, communication with districts about it and then just getting ideas, you know, what was successful in their process, maybe what were some failures. Um, one of the districts that, um, I, to me, has a model plan is the Middleton Cross Plains and so we'll be in the future having some conversations with them. Phase two is more the design and development. I see that happening more next year or perhaps after the referendum. Um, and this is where we really get going. We get that committee established, um, and then we, we conduct listening sessions. Maybe we'll send out a survey, um, and look at those key competencies. And then of course, that very fun phase three, um, what that actually will look like, what our Portrait of a Graduate looked like, and then that's the, the launch part. So I do wanna make a point that the, the role of the community is really important to this process. This is not just gonna be us sitting in a room and then bringing in some students and some teachers and we just decide what we think, um, it should look like. This is going to be very important that we really have a lot of community voice, which I think will be really exciting and then that will just more buy in. And what I would love to see at the end of the day is that workplaces really, this becomes not just a Monroe, school district or Monroe vision, but this is a, something for the workplaces can refer to, um, that this is an expectation of what their values and skills and competencies would be. But that would be, that's a lofty goal, we'd have to get everybody on board, but maybe we'll get there. So truly, it's just a living vision, as I've said. Um, we want every classroom program and partnership, um, to prepare all students to become, um, those confident, compassionate, uh, citizens that will contribute meaningfully to, if they stay in Monroe, um, or if they go beyond, um, wherever they are, they make an impact and they're happy and successful in life. So Todd and I during the back-to-school in-service, we thought we'd do a little activity just to get their input on what they thought, um, was most important in terms of what the characteristics, morals, values that they, they found more, most important in the students. So again, this is just our district staff, um, and then I've ranked it, um, in top eight themes. So confidence and self-belief was number one, growth mindset and resilience was two, and then problem-solving and critical thinking were three, and then you can see how it goes down, um, the line. But all of those are really important, but it'll be interesting to go through this process of what students believe are those most important competencies, what our business leaders think are, and so on, and parents. I have a, and a couple of examples, I just thought you might be interested in just seeing like what a couple of districts have done. So you can just see how, how much they personalize it to their district. Um, I don't know how we put a cheesemaker on there, but we'll see, we'll see what this ends up looking like. But it will take a couple of years, but I'm really excited about the, the process of it and, and what it could do for, for our district and our, for our community. Questions?
So this would probably tie in as strategic goals for the district. I mean, do you see that tie in?
Absolutely, and, um, we've had some conversations, conversations with Joe about that. Um, I do see it going hand in hand, um, because it will kind of guide the, the next steps for our district. Absolutely.
Yeah, we're gonna slide for the, I see the three phases under timeline, but no kind of time. You said a couple of years, or what?
Yep.
Roughly, what, what, how long does each phase take, or what are you thinking here?
So I'm thinking with, like, the phase one, the research and discovery, this will be up until the referendum in April. Um, and then after the referendum, we can switch to this forum in the committee, um, and then, and then get going. So I would say typically that takes about six months, if not a little bit longer. Um, and so it'd probably be in two, twenty-six, twenty-seven, maybe by the end of the year that we would have the phase three in place. This is based on, so Scott Carr, the man who, um, Joe introduced us to, he is, he has said over and over again, one to two years is probably the fastest you'd wanna go. Um, so it's important that you really take your time with this. Um, I mean, we talked to some districts that are on year five. I mean, and it, we don't want this to be, take five years. Um, but it is, it's very interesting to hear, um, like the Middleton, for example, like they took, they took quite a while. They took well over a year, I think.
Yeah, they said it's two or three years.
Two to three years.
Any questions for Amy?
I would just add, like, I think it's hard sometimes to, to truly grasp what this would look like, but to me, it's truly exciting because this will define what we want for our kids. Like rather than kids going through a 4K, 12 academic experience and having this, you know, a series of things that they do, this truly defines what it'll mean to go to school in Monroe, to be a cheesemaker. What are those values, what are those skills that we want kids to have? I mean, that's why it does take so long because we wanna make sure that all of our community stakeholders are engaged so that everyone's on the same page and that they own it. Um, and so while it'll take a little time to do it, I think it's something that really could serve to, to unify the community around the work that we're doing and hopefully also help shape some of the, the academic experiences within our classrooms. So I'm looking forward to seeing how it all comes together.
Okay. Moving on, we've got, um, items F and G are, are related here. Um, so I wanted to maybe just say a word before I turn it over to administration here. We were hoping to do a, a couple of things tonight. So we wanted to, to first ground in the, the financial, uh, both reality but also what the, what the run looks like over the next four or five years. Um, and that is gonna be the, the kind of table setting for, um, administration sharing their, uh, proposed, uh, reduction plan that outlines essentially if we do not pass a referendum, what will happen. Or in some cases, even if we do pass the referendum, what, what the plan is to kind of bring our budget uh, into a, into a solid place over time. And just to, so the board kind of sees the sequence here. I think that the aim is to give, um, we asked administration to bring us a proposal on the amount that we should ask for. And tonight is our opportunity as a board, based on the financial picture, based on the proposed reduction plan, to give input to, to Joe and Ron and the team so that they can come back with a recommendation on December eighth. So we're not making any decisions tonight. We're not gonna, we're not gonna vote on anything tonight, but our, our, we are, our, our aim is to give, uh, useful feedback to Joe and Ron and the, what we would wanna see from a number uh, so that they can bring that back on December eighth, rooted in the information presented. Is there any questions on that from the board before we turn it over to administration? Or feedback on that?
No, that makes sense.
Cool. I'll turn it over to Ron so he can talk a little bit about the projection that he's put together.
Yeah, Todd, if you could pull up the second document, the deficit projection for winter of twenty twenty-five.
You want the presentation?
It's just a PDF. Yeah, if you wanna upsize that as much as you can, that'd be great. On mine, it fits my screen nicely. I apologize, I originally was gonna print this out so you'd have a hard copy and I got sidetracked this afternoon and did not get that done. Um, lot of data on here, and so we're actually gonna start in the middle of the page in, in orange, uh, where's the deficit projection that we're looking at. The first three columns are what are actual, were in twenty twenty-three, twenty-four, twenty-four, twenty-five and, uh, in the current year's budget of twenty-five, twenty-six. And then the next five columns are projecting out what we're seeing for the next five years to come. And so when we look at our budget deficit, uh, for this year, uh, remember at the annual meeting, we were at two million dollars. Uh, we had a few adjustments at the end of October and we're at one point eight million dollars of a deficit in our current year. Our enrollment is dropping, so over the next five years, you can basically see that deficit growing by anywhere from seven hundred thousand down to five hundred thousand at the end per year, if, if nothing, uh, was to be done. Now, I'm gonna talk a little bit in a second about the above factors that lead to that. The reality is if we're looking at some decline in enrollment, um, we'll likely have to make some reductions, uh, going forward into future years because we'll see some drop in that enrollment. So that's what you're seeing in the, kind of the light red, pinkish tones is an anticipation that even if we have a referendum or if we, a referendum would not pass, we're likely gonna have to continue to make some, some reductions. And keep in mind, those reductions accumulate. So if you reduce three positions in year one to save three hundred thousand and you add another two positions for two hundred thousand in year two, in year two, it's really five hundred thousand dollars worth of reductions. And by the time you get out to twenty thirty, thirty-one, it's, you know, over one point one million dollars. And so what you see in the blue, uh, at the very bottom is kind of what that, uh, deficit looks like uh, if you incorporate those reductions, uh, in the pink over each of those years. And there is a, there's a sheet, we're not gonna pull that up tonight, but there's a sheet that says, uh, with details. So those of you who like to see exactly how the sausage is made, what percentages are all being used to, to estimate all those expenditures out, you can see that. On the expenditure side, uh, there are a couple lines above the orange, uh, in highlight. You can see what that expenditure line growth looks like based upon all those percentages and, and assumptions that are on that other sheet. And basically, it's two point four percent a year. Uh, it'll vary a little bit, but that's, that's in essence what the, the growth is in expenditures uh, over time prior to making those reductions. And so, um, we're right now in a, in an environment where, uh, the inflationary rate, uh, is, is exceeding that. Um, uh, certainly, uh, especially in the healthcare side of the world as well as, uh, even in some of the, uh, staffing and purchase services and, um, other types of the world too that all come into this factor. But we usually try and do as much as we can to, to moderate those and, and to bring those down, make adjustments as necessary. So, uh, that's where I, you know, I feel comfortable with where our projection is as to how those expenditures would grow, uh, setting aside the other reductions down below that would factor in later. So if we look at the top, this projection, and we're gonna look at one more with the flat enrollment, this projection looks at what are some of our outgoing, um, graduating classes versus what are we seeing for incoming, uh, 4K and kindergarten classes? And if we don't mitigate that, what does that look like over time? The reality is we often sometimes come in much better than this. Uh, there are times when we come in worse than this. And so this is just looking at what kind of classes are we seeing going out and what are our typical starting classes of the last three, four, or five years, uh, that we have? And the a, area that's in the light yellow, uh, is really the first part of that revenue limit factor that is the increases that are, are driven by, uh, the annual increase, uh, per pupil and then what the enrollment is. And right now, the state law says there's a three hundred and twenty-five dollar per pupil increase built into the law. And so this assumes no other dollars above that. That's saying three twenty-five that's in law is what the increase will be.
Over the five-year period?
Yep, for each year of the five years, right? And so it's not making any assumption that any other dollars are being put into the system, uh, by the state legislators. And if you look at that, um, fourth line, I guess I'm gonna say the third line with numbers in yellow, that's where that declining enrollment exemption shows up. And for, uh, those who aren't familiar, and I know the board's heard this a few times, basically what they take is your three-year average of enrollment. They multiply it by that revenue limit per member and it tells you what your, your revenue limit base is. And that works great if your revenue limit is either, uh, steady or increasing. If you're decreasing, they say, we're not going to move your base backwards. However, we're going to give you a one-year hold harmless exemption of dollars to offset what your decline in enrollment was. But it's only there for the one year and then it goes away the following year. It doesn't go into that base, it doesn't get kept, it's just there for one year. And so if you look at twenty-six, twenty-seven, you know, as a three hundred and twenty-five dollars per pupil, that revenue limit base is really only growing from nearly twenty-five point nine million to twenty-six point one million. So only two hundred thousand dollars of actual base growth. Five hundred and eighty-one thousand is just a one-year offset of that decline in enrollment and then it goes away. You then move forward to twenty-seven, twenty-eight, again, we're only seeing about a two hundred and ninety thousand dollar increase in the actual base revenue in four hundred and ten thousand is that one-time declining enrollment exemption. Long story short, when you get out to twenty thirty, thirty-one, you're looking at a, um, a revenue limit base of, of twenty-seven point five million, um, compared to a current one of twenty-five point nine million. Uh, I didn't do the math, but I'll do it quick now. That's six point three percent, and so if we take that over five years, that's one point two percent growth, uh, in, in that base. And so that's what's causing that continual growth in that deficit is your, your revenue base is only growing at one point two percent. Meanwhile, um, your, um, expenditures are growing at two point four percent. And so.
Just based on inflation?
Right, just based on, and so there's gonna be two factors. And when we look at the flat enrollment, you'll be able to see it a little bit. So part of it is the three twenty-five itself isn't keeping up with inflation. But then you factor that with that decline in enrollment and it, it just kind of snowballs it. And so when you look at those reductions in, in pink there, if we truly do see that kind of decline in enrollment, you know, it makes some sense that we would have to continue to be making reductions in our budget. Uh, in a second, we'll look at what happens, uh, with a flat enrollment. Uh, however, then it's, it would be harder to continue to look at making those reductions year after year if our enrollment truly isn't falling off. But if you look down in blue, uh, that projected shortfall, uh, two point three million already in twenty-six, twenty-seven, uh, growing to two point eight, uh, growing to three point two, three point six, and three point nine. Now, I don't think we're gonna ask a question that's gonna be able to address, uh, that full amount, uh, certainly. However, it's going to be, uh, structuring, uh, and finding that mix of what is the right question? What are the right assumptions, um, that allow us to, to mitigate some of that deficit uh, a, and mitigate some of that risk of, because we just can't burn through our fund balance at that kind of a rate.
I guess a question, Ron. So the blue budget deficit after additional reductions, is that assuming that our current fund balance going out of this fiscal year would remain where it's at then? Or would you?
This is just, I'm not touching, I'm not dealing with the fund balance right now. These are just what the deficits are. Now, if, if you look at our fund balance, our deficit, our fund balance would be gone, uh, very quickly, right? So, so this is just looking at what is the structural deficit each year that we either need to address? that we either need to address via a referendum or even more reductions to 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 address that? And that's why obviously we're going to be talking about in 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 a few minutes here, a plan for if the referendum does not pass, what those reductions would have to look like. And the reality is, you know, going forward, even if that were to happen, there would have to probably be additional reductions. And and it gets to be really difficult. You know, because the the reduction list we'd be looking at even without a referendum is extensive. To think that there's going to be additional beyond that would be quite problematic.
Can you remind us, what were the total of the reductions over the last two years?
We'll have that in the next presentation, I don't have it off the top of my head.
Two point four million dollars over the last three years.
So we'll be getting into that in a short. China, if you'd open the flat enrollment. This is a question Jim had and I, you know, he hadn't thought of it and it actually is good in the sense of this kind of takes away the enrollment factor and says, well, what if in a magical world, our enrollment just stayed where it was? The reality is, the three twenty five still doesn't keep up with inflation, three hundred twenty five dollars per pupil. And so down there in orange again, you can see that that growth from, you know, two point six million up to a three point eight million dollar deficit over time. And that's just a a factor of the allowed revenues from the state not keeping up with what the cost increases of inflation are. And and we're probably estimating even less than what the true cost of inflation is at this point in time. But, you know, what we're projecting out there. This keeps, if you made all those same reductions again, in the blue, it kind of keeps a steady number there of right around, you know, two point three million in the first year, but then it kind of steadies out right around the two point seven million dollar mark. Now, again, the difficult part is, would we be able to make all those additional reductions over time if our our enrollment truly remained flat? And that would be the question that we would have to have. But that's something boards would certainly have to wrestle with. I don't believe that we would probably keep our enrollment flat in probably the first year or two. I think there's some, you know, changes in the community that are happening that might help us mitigate what the drop is, especially as we get out two, three, four, five years. But we'll probably still see a a slight decrease, that's the straight, that's the trend across the entire state. I think we're about seventy percent of districts are now declining in enrollment. And so that's just the the hard fact of the numbers unless you live in a growing suburban district. The numbers are dropping both in urban and in rural districts. But here you can see in that light yellow how that revenue limit now grows, it grows up to, you know, twenty eight point nine million. Those one time declining enrollment exemptions get smaller so that the increases truly are hitting that revenue limit. So instead of a couple hundred thousand dollars a year, you're actually seeing about seven hundred thousand dollars a year in growth in that revenue limit factor. And so that just shows you the impact of of a decline in enrollment on top of increases not keeping up with inflation. And so the short of it is, and if you go to the orange again, in a in a world if our enrollment stayed the same, you know, two point six million to three point eight become the the deficits prior to budget reductions. And then if you go to the other document where it's not a flat, where you do see the decreases in enrollment, that grows from two point six to to nearly five million. So it becomes very problematic out there. So I think some of that's going to lead to questions and discussion about, you know, is it a nonrecurring versus a recurring referendum? If it's a nonrecurring, what length of time? Because as as we know, you know, it's it's hard to project and with with create any certainty two, three, four years out because the next biennial budget could blow up all of your assumptions. Certainly, when you get out there four or five years where your two biennial state budgets down the road, we we really don't have any idea. Now, the three twenty five is in law and we can bank on that a little bit now, but prior to that, we we couldn't even bank on that. It doesn't make any assumptions for any increases in the per pupil aid because they have not raised that now for the last six, seven years. And so all of your other revenues are pretty much stagnant and and it's just showing increases in in what the revenue limit is. Because the reality is if we go out and get other grants, oftentimes they come with new additional expenses, right? And so there aren't many grants out there that we can write where we can get dollars while not increasing expenditures. They don't let us suppo, they don't let us suppo, supplant, we can only supplement. Jody, do you have any perspective on this before we move into the next one or? I don't know if we want to have our discussion after this or after we get through the next one.
I was just going to say, I think this serves as a nice foundational piece to understand some of the tough decisions that lie ahead in the next presentation. So I'll defer to Jim as far as whether or not you want to go through some of the numbers or questions right now or?
Or we can circle back to.
Yeah, I want to give, just while it's kind of fresh here, for members the opportunity to ask questions on the on the financial side of the house. I I've got one, Ron, just the we talk a lot about the the short term kind of cash flow borrowing. And you know, connected to our earlier conversation about like November and December being lights. Can can you just help, if we just, if we got way down, right, like our fund balance is in two million bucks, one point five or something like, what, how how much is the cost of short term borrowing at that compared to what we've kind of seen?
I'll go back to when I first got here. I mean, a lot, it's it's, again, it varies depending upon interest rates and 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 the full amount. But I I don't, hopefully, we'll never get to where we were when I got here, which was, we were five hundred thousand dollars in the hole, we had a negative fund balance. And and we need about six million dollars in order to avoid all short term cash flow borrowing. So anywhere between that zero negative five hundred thousand and six million, you're going to have to do some short term cash flow borrowing. It's just a question of how long and how much. But when I first got here, the first couple of years before I got here and, you know, right as they had all the deficits, huge deficits and and when I inherited what I did, we were spending three hundred thousand dollars a year on on interest to pay for short term cash flow borrowing. Think of it as living on a credit card. And it's something that I said for for years as I made my presentations to the community. You know, would you rather spend three hundred thousand dollars on interest to a bank or three hundred thousand dollars for people or programs that are helping kids? And I think that always resonated with our community. And so I do think our community will have some expectation that even if these deficits grow, that, you know, we've we've been able to lean on our fund balance the last year or two. But that's not a long term solution. At some point, we have to stop allowing that to to T road away so that we don't get into that situation where, you know, you truly are having to borrow that much a year and pay that much interest in a year.
Other questions? We keep rolling? I think then we're going on to.
We can circle back to this when we get done with the next.
Borrow the clicker from you guys.
So it's really helpful for, you know, Ron to go through some of those numbers and the projection over the next several years. And I think what it clearly demonstrates is that the district and the community has some difficult choices ahead of us. Recognize that, you know, there's there's a number of folks in our community that are are struggling and and faced with tough decisions. And there's a lot of folks that have a vision for what they want this community and and our school district to be in. That can be challenging at times and our job is to provide, you know, a straightforward factual representation of not only where the budget is and what we're projecting going forward, but also in terms of some of the tough choices that lie ahead for us. And part of this exercise is, you know, having to look forward to next year potentially not passing a referendum and what that would mean in terms of reductions for us. So that's what I hope to quickly cover in my presentation. First, just to give a little background and context to what Ron had had shared. The board has certainly seen this a number of times, certainly the community has seen it as well. But this this visual that's presented really captures what Ron was just talking about in that our expenditures are are exceeding our revenues. That's largely driven by the fact that the revenue limits are not keeping up with the inflationary costs. And people feel that in their own personal budgets, right? When you're buying groceries, when you're talking about insurance, things of that nature, there's, things cost more. And if your revenues aren't in line with with those increases, it makes it tough to pay the bills. And so for us, we really have three, three factors that play here. One is the Wisconsin public school funding. Ron talked a little bit about it, I'm not going to go into a lot of detail, but it's creating some challenges for us. The other major factor that Ron also touched on is our declining enrollment. And this is one that we've heard people say, hey, you don't have as many kids as you used to, that's why your costs need to go down into that. I say, you're absolutely right. We know that and we've been taking steps to adjust to that declining enrollment. And we'll we'll provide some some evidence of that in a little bit. But we're down as many two as two hundred kids since twenty twenty. And that adds up to a lot of lost membership aid. And then finally, you know, we have to acknowledge that last fall, there was a failed operational referendum. We had one point five million dollars of referendum support that was provided annually over eight years. And then last year, the community decided that that we wouldn't continue that that level of support. And as a result, you combine all these factors and we have some challenges that are ahead of us. Taking a look at, you know, the referendum needs across Wisconsin, Ron did a nice job, he touched on some of this. But we have four hundred and twenty one school districts in the state of Wis- Wisconsin. And it's been reported that eighty two percent of all school districts have had to go to at least one referendum since revenue limits were imposed. So the point of that is that this isn't a Monroe issue. This isn't about us not doing the tough work to balance the books. This is about the state of public school funding in Wisconsin. Just in twenty twenty four alone, there were a hundred and forty eight operating referendum questions that were asked across a hundred and thirty one school districts, and that's about thirty one percent just in that year alone. So again, this isn't about Monroe necessarily. This is about the realities of of public school funding in in Wisconsin and and taking it head on and making some some difficult decisions. What you'll see with this slide is is kind of that historical representation of some of the cuts. So I just talked about declining enrollment and if you have fewer kids, you get less aid or less money. And of course, you know, that's where the community would say, well, then you've got to reduce your expenditures. And this slide demonstrates that work that's been done over the last four years, which includes this year. And I'm not going to go through all of these, the board has seen these many times. These reductions cover teachers, specialists, aides, there's programs that have been lost, custodians, all kinds of different positions that are represented here. And we've done our very best to make reductions that largely avoid kids in the classroom. Although it's getting to the point where that's been difficult and we have lost some programs. And what you see here is that we're now at a point over the last four years, we've reduced just about twenty eighth FTEs in terms of positions in the district. That's a lot for a district of our size, that's a significant number of positions. And so, you know, it's important to recognize that, yes, some of these reductions were absolutely necessary because our enrollment is going down. But I think you'd be hard pressed to suggest that the district hasn't done the good work of of trying to be more efficient and be as lean as possible in order to maintain the level of service that we just celebrated earlier when Todd was sharing our district and school report card scores. So as we take a look at, you know, the purpose of a potential reduction plan, it really comes down to while we've reduced, you know, as I said just a bit ago, around two point four million dollars over the last three years, reductions are going to continue to be necessary, Ron just demonstrated that with his his presentation, and we need to talk about whether or not we can explore increased revenue limit authority. Our district, all most districts in the state of Wisconsin are faced with a choice. And it really comes down to making significant reductions or passing a referendum to to increase operating revenues. Or in our case, really looking at doing both because one, one on its own won't won't necessarily get us to where we need to be. So what we're going to talk about here is a potential reduction plan that would be implemented if the community voted no in an April twenty twenty six operating referendum. And one thing I want to be clear about, and I've heard this or seen this communicated in the community a couple of times. And I think it's it's understandable why people would say that, you know, get ready for the scare tactics. Get ready for, you know, them to put out a list that's going to, you know, upset people. But one thing I want to be clear about is, this is our reality. This is not a scare tactic, this is not us bluffing. We met with our staff, we had hard discussions both individually and as teams, and those were very emotional, very personal conversations. We would not have put our people through that if we didn't realize that this was the reality that lies ahead. So again, I understand why people might be feeling that, hey, we're trying to position ourselves one way or another. But I just really want to be clear that, you know, I've made a commitment that while I'm in this position to be absolutely clear on what it is that we're doing and why. And I want to be clear that this is something that will be our reality if we don't pass a referendum in April twenty twenty six. So I I I shared this next slide because I think it's important to help people understand what goes into developing a plan such as this. And many folks haven't been a part of this kind of process. But the reality is it's it's very complex and there's a lot of information that's taken into consideration. So Ron just went through our multi year projections that look at our revenues and expenses, that's a huge part of it. We look at our fund balance, we look at our enrollment and the enrollment trends. We look at our staffing, we compare staffing and and our ratios to other districts, both in our in our area and also make a comparison to demographically similar school districts. We're looking at class sizes, we're looking at student needs of the kids we're currently serving in the buildings. We have to look at our legal requirements, both with regard to state law and federal law. We're looking at what programs are working well and we have to look at the impact on the learning and growth. We take into account community feedback that we received recently. And then certainly the the operational and facility needs that we have. I mean, you put all that together and that's a lot to consider, it's a lot to weigh. And I think we did a a pretty good job of trying to put all that together. So as we go through this plan, one thing that I wanted to talk about first was the rationale for the elementary portion of the plan. There's the elementary portion, there's the secondary portion, and then there's a a reduction at the district level. Want to talk a little bit about the elementary piece because that's probably the one that is going to maybe be less familiar for people. So if we were to not pass a referendum in April, it would be necessary to reduce to six sections per grade level in our school district. And so just for context, for many years, we operated having nine sections at grade levels, then we went down to eight and now down to seven. And so basically what that means is, across the three elementaries, we currently operate seven sections at a grade level, three at. seven sections at a grade level, three at Parkside, three at Northside, and one at Abraham Lincoln. One of the things that we considered and talked about extensively was should we consider closing Abraham Lincoln Elementary? And on the surface, I think most people would logically look at this challenge and say that's the right thing to do because it, it seems to be most efficient. Our plan does not recommend the closure of Abraham Lincoln and, and we've got the rationale listed there and I'll go through those quickly. First, the community was surveyed on this matter and they did indicate that they prefer to keep Abraham Lincoln open. The district recently invested funds in making significant improvements to Abe. Abe continues to be necessary since it houses our early childhood and 4K program. So in other words, even if we took all of the grade level classrooms out of that building and moved them into Northside and Parkside, we would not have enough room in those two buildings to house our, our early childhood and 4K programs. The physical space just isn't there. We think it's important to maintain flexibility going forward for the district should enrollment change for a variety of different reasons. This preserves a school presence on the south side of town, which was something that's been communicated in previous surveys. And then just the fact that Abraham Lincoln is a highly successful school that was recognized as a national blue ribbon school and they've demonstrated great success. Now, having said all that, that doesn't mean that we don't make reductions at the elementary level if we don't pass the referendum. The reality is we have to. That's just part of the work that we have to do. And so what we came up with is a three, two, one model. And basically what that means is we would recommend a model where Northside would continue to have three sections per grade level. Parkside would go down to two and Abraham Lincoln would have one section as they currently do. The reason why we identified Parkside as making the reduction is because it would allow us to redistribute a fairly large at-risk population that is currently being served at Parkside. So for those that don't know how we, how we pull kids into certain elementary schools, sometimes it's by neighborhood and a walk-in zone and in other cases, it's through those that live in rural areas or swing areas that have been identified in our school district. And just based on how things have been set up, Parkside has a lot of, of high need kids and at times it's, it's created a strain on the staff there. And so if this were necessary, we, we identified this as potentially an opportunity to redistribute kids in a more equitable manner. It's not ideal because we have a lot of kids that have gone to that school in a long time. And it would force us to reassign as many as 43 students across the district. So there are some challenges associated with this plan. We recognize that, but we, we believe that based on all of the things that identified in the previous slide, that it's the right plan. So let's get into what this plan would look like if we don't pass the referendum in April. At the elementary level, it would include an administrator position. That would mean the reduction of a principal position and that would force us to use the remaining administrative staff to provide administrative support at Abraham Lincoln. It may also require us to utilize a lead teacher or dean of students position. That cost has been built into the cost savings that you see on the screen. It would also mean that we would have to reduce to encore teachers, art and music at the elementary level. That creates some challenges for us and for those that haven't done any kind of scheduling work at the elementary level. When you have to build your schedule around specials, it's, can significantly interfere with your ability to set your school up around what matters most, which is your academics and your intervention time to make sure that your kids get all the supports that you need. And that's one of the reasons why we're able to celebrate tonight is because we've been very careful about setting our schedules up in a way that will make sure that all kids have their needs met. So that would be compromised. We would also be looking at six core teachers across the elementary and I just alluded to that. This would lead to increased class sizes and force us to consolidate a, a high special ed population into fewer sections. We would be looking at reducing one at-risk or an intervention specialist. That's a position that has demonstrated to be highly successful across their district. And we would have to make the reduction there. And we would have to look at 2.5 FTEs of part-time custodial support at the elementary level. That totals 12.5 FTEs and just under $1.1 million at the elementary level. Moving on to the secondary, we would have the reduction of four core teachers. So two at the middle school, an ELA and a math teacher, and at the high school, a science and social studies teacher. That would lead to not only increased class sizes, but also the elimination of some intervention support. It would limit some course options and the availability of AP courses. And again, it would, it would impact our, our scheduling work that we do there and how kids are able to access the, the courses which they would hope to access and make that, that process more challenging. Would also impact our encore teachers, a reduction of three teachers there for career and technical ed, family and consumer sciences, and a physical ed teacher. That would result in us having to share some of our teachers across the middle school and high school, which we already do in order to realize some efficiencies, but this would take it to a, a more significant degree. And anyone that knows about schedules and sharing staff is that when you share staff across buildings, you lose teacher time because they have to travel and that's less time in front of kids. It would also result in some reductions of art sections and generally just force a lot of challenges with our, our encore or elective courses. And then finally, one that's a significant hit as well, it would be the reduction of at risks, at risk and intervention specialists at the high school level. This district has a long history of investing in providing support to our high school kids that are trying to find a path towards graduation. And this, this reduction is not about not valuing those positions, but really about having to focus our, our money on the things that are truly mandated in our schools today. And while this isn't legally mandated, it's something that would have a, a significant impact on our, our students, our graduation rate, our behavior, behavioral data. And it would, it would mean the elimination of the GED Option 2 program, which has been very successful.
Can you close with kids?
The GED Option 2 program? Sure. So basically what the GED Option 2 program allows us to do is to provide very intentional, specific instruction to kids to help them pass a series of tests to get their GED in a way that allows them to receive a regular Monroe High School diploma. So say kids have passed all the core credits in certain core areas, but maybe not in math. They would be able to take the GED Option 2 program to pass a test in math and then ultimately graduate. It's a program that's been run for a number of years. It's literally been a lifeline for countless kids in our, in our high school and it would be a shame if, if we had to lose that. But again, it's, it's not about the fact that we don't value that program. It's that we're having to make a little series of tough choices about what we can afford and what's mandated and it's getting to be that, that lean across all levels. Good question, Phil.
Hey Joe, if I could too, I guess, and maybe I should wait till the end till we're all done, but you know, we're looking what, three and a half bodies between middle school, high school, and you know, principals and that here, you guys know how critical it is. I guess, are there other plans in place, I would assume so, to assist these students then that are there? Would they be then going into the general classroom?
Yeah, I don't think we're there yet, I would say, because we don't know what we'll have and what we don't have. We would have to come up with that plan, yeah.
Okay, yeah, that would be one of the things I would certainly really like to see emphasized. Mainly because of, I mean, these are the kids that get lost pretty easy, you know? And you guys know better than anything on that. And I just want to make sure that there are plans for that group of kids. And I know it's not mandated. I understand that and I, you know, certainly, certainly understand the problems of it, but, and I just want to make sure that that, that is in the plan somewhere of how we're going to cover that.
Probably a really hard part of this, right? Is because we, we already have a plan to help those students.
Exactly, yeah.
The people in our community are going to vote on whether or not that's important or not.
Well, and I guess that's just it, so, okay. And how many, about how many students are in that? I'm not, I know it varies.
It varies every year. It's a, you know, a smaller percentage, I would say. I don't, I don't have the numbers offhand.
Okay, I can certainly get you that though. Like, bring it back.
Thank you. I would say I don't want to guess.
Yeah, Ron has coached us up well on that. Okay, and then a district level reduction, and this one would also be extremely difficult. We would have to look at closing our AV center, which would provide for the reduction of a position there at a savings of $105,000. For those that don't know what the AV center provides for our district, yes, some of it's copying, but it's so much more. There's a lot of services. There's our website management. There's just, you know, a variety of different events and services that are coordinated, including some of those which are paid services for our community. And Heidi does a great job in that position. So you total that up with all of the other levels that have been identified. That's 22 and a half FTEs, over $2 million of potential reductions or, or savings for the district, which again, it's something that we need to consider if the board or if the, the community doesn't approve the referendum in April. I would just remind everyone that may be watching, that, that 22 and a half is on top of the, about 28 that I identified earlier. So we're talking about 50 positions, 50 FTEs over five years that we've reduced, which for a, a district of our size is a massive number of positions lost. So just to provide that context. You know, Ron just talked about, can't remember what color this was on your, your spreadsheet. Maybe it was the blue?
Or the orange.
Thanks. Or the orange. It was one of those colors. But basically what Ron referenced was regardless of the referendum outcome, we have a responsibility to make reductions where possible every single year. And that's something that we've done. We have a long history of that. And sometimes we don't always bring it to the board and, and celebrate it as much as some would like, but the reason for that is typically we're making those decisions after there's some attrition, meaning maybe someone retired or someone moved on to another job. And what we don't want to do is come to the board and say, oh, you know, Joe just retired and now we're going to cut that job because we don't need it. It, it sends a message that maybe would be hurtful to some, but the reality is we do make those reductions when necessary. And over the time, over time, it's led to a significant amount of savings for the district. And we would continue to do that for this upcoming year and that's represented on this slide. We've recognized after doing our enrollment analysis and looking at the class sizes, that we absolutely can make at a minimum two elementary grade level teacher reductions and possibly three, depending on how things play out through, throughout the remainder of the year. So basically what that means is we know we have some cohorts, meaning some groups in grade levels, that will allow us to reduce the, the number of sections that are provided. And we can go to six sections in those, those grade levels regardless of the referendum. So that would result in a savings of roughly 190,000 to 285,000. And then on top of that, we've also identified that we can make a reduction to the family and consumer sciences teacher at the middle school. I will say, it's important for me to say this, as a longtime pupil services special ed director, started out at the middle school when I first worked as a school psych. That program has a, a long and storied history of doing great things for kids, in particular, providing a lot of great service for special ed students. But the reality is when things are this lean, we have to make some tough choices. And we're able to organize things in a way that we would still be able to offer some encore options without this program, but just for me personally, that, that one's sad because we do have a long history there and some great work has happened in, in the district. So all told, you know, we're looking at anywhere from, you know, 285,000 to 380,000 that we will reduce this year regardless of the outcome of the referendum. So just wanted to be clear about that. And again, that calls back to what Ron was saying in terms of we're looking at saving it around, you know, $300,000 in reductions on an annual basis. And we've been doing that work over, over time. This is just a communication process and timeline. It shows the work that's been done up to this point, developing the plan, reviewing it a little bit with the board, working with the staff, communicating with individuals and large groups and teams, which as I said earlier, was, was a difficult process. We're here tonight talking about this in open session so the community can get a sense of, of what we're talking about. At our next meeting on December 8th, the board will have a discussion about the plan, what this means, and ultimately the referendum question. And then it's our, our hope and plan that on January 12th, the board will approve the resolution that will be taken forward for the referendum. And then on April 7th, we'll have a vote in our community to determine not only the future of our schools, but the future of our community and what it's going to look like. So I know that's been a lot of me talking. I do want to close out with a couple of slides to just summarize the takeaways. First, the financial pressures we face are statewide. This is not unique to Monroe. We have over 80% of Monroe school districts have been forced to turn to a referendum to mainstay, maintain staffing and program. If you pay attention to public school news, you'll see that almost on a daily basis, we're seeing reports of budget cuts, staffing reductions, schools being closed, and a variety of other challenges that, that they're facing. So the, the issue is real. It's not a Monroe issue. This is a Wisconsin funding reality. We have exercised strong fiscal discipline for years. We had roughly 28 positions that were reduced over the last four years and that has been done in an effort to restructure not only positions and services and programs, but also to maximize our efficiency because we're recognizing that we do have fewer students. We've been strategic and careful about this work and it's important that we continue to do it because we know we have a responsibility to be good stewards of the, the community's tax dollars. And I believe that we're doing a good job with that in an effort to continue to build trust with the community. There's a lot of work that goes into this. It's data-driven. There's a lot of analysis. There's a lot of different variables that are considered, including stakeholder feedback. There's a lot of different ways that you can do this. So I'm not sitting here saying this is the one and only plan to get to this point. There's a lot of ways you could do it, but we feel this plan takes all of the, the information, the feedback, the data, and, and reconciles those things. Moving on to the next one. We're now at a point where reductions directly impact students and classrooms. I think we've worked really hard. We've had some pretty big cuts over, over the years and I think we've been able to maneuver in a way that has allowed us to minimize the impact and we are beyond that point. We're now at a point where we're going to have to make some significant reductions to services for kids and programs and intervention supports and significant offerings to, to our kids that will impact the, the quality of the education for our kids. Again, we don't take these decisions lightly, but it's, it's where we're at financially, given the way things are working in Wisconsin and, and public school funding. So without the additional revenue authority, these reductions are unavoidable and we do owe it, owe it to our community to continue to be clear and transparent about what we're doing and why we're doing. And I look forward to the opportunity to answer any questions from the community as those come up. But again, this isn't a scare tactic. This is absolutely our reality. And again, we wouldn't have put our staff through this if this wasn't serious. And then despite all of that, regardless of what, what happens in April, we remain committed to being responsible stewards of, of the taxpayers' dollars and fierce advocates for our kids. We celebrated the heck out of our, our kids, our staff, our leaders, our, our school, our community, our parents, and we're going to continue to work as hard as we can. This in no way is us suggesting that we're, we're not going to continue to do that work, but I do want to be clear that while we've been able to make reductions and realize some growth and success, we can't continue to cut our way to excellence at some point. We weren't able to, to maintain that momentum and that progress and that growth and, and it's gonna hit us hard, so. That's the overview. Apologize for how much was there, but it's a complex process and plan and I'd certainly be happy- And I'd certainly be happy to, uh, answer any questions that the board has at this time.
Does anyone have a comment? Oh, first of all, thank you for you and the staff for putting this together. Their concise, in-depth information. You know, I think a couple of things that I think are really important to me, and I think to the community as a whole is, you know, continue to improve our schools and how we're performing. And I think our report card results really show that. Get as lean as you can without impacting the student experience. We've seen reductions of two point four million in the last two years.
Three years.
Three years, you know, I mean, that's, that work's happening, it works getting done. And I would hope that the community recognizes that and, um, supports the referendum, whatever that may be.
Thanks, Phil.
I kinda wrote down some thoughts as well. Um, starting, just like Phil said, thank you for the hard work. Um, budgets are obviously never easy and it really stings when you have to make these hard cuts. I really appreciate you and your respect for the staff in talking to them first and giving them the information, knowing that it's very personal and it affects families right here in our community. I, it's, you know, just very concerning that this is the bottom line, there's nothing more to take from. There is always the legally required curriculum to maintain and services to offer. Um, a lot of these cuts reduce the amount of interventionist and at, at-risk positions, which puts more stress on an already thin program in order to make sure the bare minimum is covered. And we're cutting from other areas such as the music arts, electives, advanced placement and honors classes. And we've always been a district that can provide more for our students. And now we're coming down to the bare bones, bare minimum. You know, we're really a community that comes together for each other. You know, you look at Backpack Buddies, Launch Programming, um, things like that. We just, we just really need to build up some cheesemaker spirit, I think. And, you know, make sure that people understand that they can come to any of us on the board, any of the admin with any questions to please seek out the truth and stay away from rumors. Um, and that we can hopefully come together and pass a referendum in April.
So as I sit here, it's hard to hear the great and celebrate, it's hard to hear. It's great to celebrate the success we've had, we've had academically in the, in the trajectory of growth and, um, the hard work of the staff and the admin. And we ju- you know, I wrote down, we've, we've cut twenty-seven point eight FT the last four years, four years, five years. And so we're asking, we're already asking them to do more and do more and do more. Um, so all of this is terrible, I don't like any of it. I, I, it's, it's, um, so it's hard to sit and hear that. And so I'm like, I'm hoping, um, some of the last lines in your presentation, Joe, I think really stuck with me. We can't continue to cut our way to excellence. And this is kind of a harsh reality for me that we, the programming is gonna look very different. If we as a community don't pass a referendum, our programming is gonna look very different. And that's, um, hard and sad, so I'm hopeful, I'm hopeful that, um, that won't be the case.
Questions or reactions on the proposal? Where, where let's go next then is to kinda get, kinda come back to the financial side and just make sure we hit the outcome of getting Joe and Ron some perspective and feedback on what you might wanna see in a recommend, recommended question or referendum amount.
Yeah, and I think before you start on some of that conversation, I guess I'll circle back to a few of the points in, in Joe's presentation. Uh, you know, the, the fact that eighty percent of districts have ran a referendum and that thirty percent, uh, had to run one in, in the last election cycle or last year tells you not only that the system has failed and that referendums are a normal part of school financing, but that gap that grows, uh, you know, many of that reason that thirty percent had to come back is whether they asked for recurring and they're having to come back and ask for more, or if they asked for non-recurring and they're continually asking for bigger numbers. The districts are, are, you know, some of these districts are five, six, seven, eight times into the cycle of questions. And, uh, that's not what was intended. I think revenue limits were good when they came into place. And we were supposed to have a short reset and to get, uh, uh, some reductions made and some spending under control. And then we were gonna fix the system, and thirty years later, we haven't fixed the system. I think the fact that at Monroe, before we, we didn't pass our last referendum, uh, the fact that our referendum amount had stayed at one point five million for eight years demonstrates that the board did make a number of reductions, whether they were reductions in positions or there were reductions in, in benefits or offerings, whatever they were, in order for that number to stay flat. If you would take that, uh, three thousand three hundred and sixty dollar gap uh, between what inflationary cost grew and what our revenue limit per pupil grew, and you multiply that over twenty-one hundred students, that's over seven million dollars. And so when we talk about setting our number, uh, and whatever number we set will be difficult for some members of our community, I understand that. Um, we've done a lot of hard work to make sure that that's not a seven million dollar question, right? Uh, there's many districts who, even in the course of three to five years, if they ladder up their question, could go from two to five million uh, over the course of a handful of questions if they're asking for that additional money each year. We've had a long time of, of moderating that, but the reality is we know what our, our, our deficit is that we have to address right away upfront. And then we know that it's gonna continue to grow, uh, even if probably we're making some reductions. And so, uh, as we wrestle with setting the number, I think we have to keep that in mind. Uh, that, you know, if anybody thought that the question could be, you know, one and a half million or less, I don't see that as being in any way, shape, or form of reality that we can consider. We'll all work on setting that number, but just so you have a, a framing of that, I don't, I don't see that as being a likely scenario.
See, that, that frame, Ron, I think part of what, what we need to deliberate as a board and what the feedback we need to provide to, to you all too as you, before you come back on the eighth is we've got a set of numbers that's what we need based on the projections, that does not bring anything back that was previously cut, to be clear. Um, but we've got, that's, that's one number. And then there's another number that's kind of the political calculus that says, what do we think we can get past? And I don't know how to put precision on that, but that's why, why we need the, the wisdom of the board to advise Joe and Ron on what, what they should come back or how, how you want them to think about the recommendation they bring back to us. So with that, I'd love to hear from, from everybody in whatever, whatever order we wanna go. Thoughts you got?
Just a general statement, I mean, our state legislature must expect every district in the state to have local operating referendums based on the high percentage of districts that ask and have asked and asked and asked. And the revenue limit problem, I mean, it's, without a local operating referendum, you are faced with a structural deficit. That must be, that must be the intention of the state legislature. I mean, I don't see it any other way. And so I think we all as a community need to understand that, whether we like it or not. I'm as sensitive as anyone on tax burden. And, uh, that's the reality as I see it. And I, and maybe I'm just reminding us of that, but, um, that was just a comment, Jim.
I appreciate that. Well, I guess one, one, I'm, I'm just going to throw out a number, whether it's what we really need. I mean, truthfully, I'm gonna have to sit down and take another look and maybe talk with you, Ron, you know, just to really get a handle on what do we need. I agree, one point five isn't gonna do it. But just, so I'm clear in my mind, um, I certainly can't see us coming back every single year to have the public vote on an operating budget. I just, I think that is absolutely insane to, to think about doing that. What I would like to see would be, say, a four-year and, um, and if possible, start out, and just for numbers, say, a, a two million for the first year, maybe two million for the second year. And then on the third, fourth year, then have that up, you know, a certain amount for the third year, twenty-one, twenty-two, twenty-five, whatever, you know? Just, you know, kind of staggered a little bit so that it isn't a huge hit the very first, knowing that at the end of four years, we're gonna have to be up to a certain percent, but not blasting all of that right away in that first year. Because I don't think we're going to need it right away in the first year, you know? So I, you know, if you kinda follow what I'm saying, anyway.
Absolutely.
You know, and I guess that's, that's kind of the formula that I would be looking for.
We've done step-in questions in the past, uh, had some success with them, also had, had one that filled with them. And so I think there are a lot of districts that, that, that do those. And I think, uh, um, you know, it takes a little more explaining, but I think people get that. People get that if your revenue limit isn't keeping up with, with the cost of inflation, that, that number does get larger every year. And so I think there's, now more than ten, fifteen years ago, I think people understand it better now.
Yeah, you know, and I, I, I do have some concern on it because if you have to live at a certain amount for a couple of years, you know, the cost of living, I can't see going down two point nine percent, you know, certainly. Um, you know, so are we gonna be able to survive for a couple of years at that amount? You know, I, I don't know. Um, that's for, you know, people to ponder, I guess, and to think about and what it would be. But I just think it's staggering the amount, what you had mentioned, just, um, you know, people have seen it before. Some, you know, other districts have done it.
I think the, just, you know, uh, so our eyes are open. I mean, whether we do it for, you know, we'll use four years as, as your example, whether we staggered increase in four, I think one thing that districts are seeing as, you know, at one time, I think there was a hope that, oh, we're gonna get those funding things figured out and then we, we won't have to, to deal with this. I think it's becoming more likely that they are. And so I'll use some of the districts that have been doing non-recurring for a long time. They may step in four years, and then their next one is another step four years. The problem is you start to get to a point where, um, if it doesn't pass, that non-recurring number becomes so large, right? We're, we're fortunate that, you know, two million is a devastating amount for our district. Think if that was four to five million, what that would look like. And so that's the one concern with non-recurring is it does kind of set up a fiscal cliff that if, if ever a question doesn't go, it becomes really problematic.
Yeah, that's the fear that I have in the back of my mind. I mean, we, we've seen that and what the effect can be from one year, two year, three year already, you know? And I won't say we're totally behind the eight ball right now, but we're pretty close. And, um, you know, if it doesn't go through this next time, wow, it, it's not gonna be pretty. But that's why I'm saying if we can take it and, you know, make it the four year and you have it, so it at least gives us some idea as to what do we have coming in the future? Not that we're going to take and expand on different things, not that we're going to be adding by any means because you still have everything else that's increasing along with it. But we have to have enough to just manage the nuts and bolts of the operation to make it work. And I think that in itself would be more palatable for the people, at least me as a taxpayer, you know, that, okay, fine, we're gonna do it this way, but, um...
And I think the one debate that districts have, and, and this gets into what Jim was talking about, the calculus of trying to figure out which is better to pass, is there's no right or wrong answer. You know, I think whether it's a, a step to non-recurring of a set period of time, like you said of, let's say, four years, or there are districts that do run, let's say, it's a, a two million recurring in year one with an additional one hundred thousand each of those next three years, at least then at the end of the four years, if it isn't reauthorized, you at least have a two, three base that you're growing off of versus going back down to zero and, and having to start over. So I think that's also a factor that we, we need to consider. Now, there was a time when, um, non-recurring, again, I think weren't passing as well because I think people thought, didn't understand that this was kind of normal. And they also didn't understand, uh, or weren't comfortable saying we're gonna authorize dollars, you know, kind of forever. But I think after thirty years, people are understanding there is no quote "solution" coming up in that one way or the other, whether we just keep asking bigger non-recurring questions or if we at least set some baseline for our district to work off of, uh, we need to address this issue.
Ron, how long were our last two non-recurring? Were they each four years or were they five years? I don't, I'm trying to remember.
First one was three, the second one was five.
Three and five.
Of the, of the two that passed.
Right, 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 that's what I, yeah, that's what I...
The five years was one point five million straight, straight line, right?
And the three year was two, right?
Yeah, it was eight years of one point five.
I think the first three actually had some questions that were additional for like some of our safety things.
They did.
But then we let that part of it go away, and it's just the operating was the, the one five, that entire expansive time.
Yeah, I think I'll, I'll go next. Um, I think I agree with you, Mike. I'd like to see it be four to five years if possible. I think that just the emotional toll that this exercise that you've all had to go through is just, I can't appreciate you enough for the work, but it, it sucks. And to have to think about doing that every year or every couple of years is just awful. I kinda like the idea that you have about stepping up, but I also feel like there needs to be that element of recurring. And I know we've tended to, to be afraid of asking for maybe what feels like a, a check in perpetuity and, and people have a fear around that. But at the same time, I don't know that any of our households ever, we just decide we're not gonna pay our mortgage anymore or we're not gonna pay certain bills because the costs of things go up, right? And so I feel like we owe it to our district to build in some consistency because I don't see this going away. And even if the state ever did get it figured out at some point, we're still gonna need that money, right? I think it's years long in the making before that would be figured out anyway. In my head, I, I felt like two is palatable, three's ideal. Uh, so I don't know if there could be a, a way to either step up to or, um, or what the options look like, Ron, to do something like that. I think two is the minimum. Um, I'd like to not have to do any of this and that looks like two. Um, and then, but also the reality is things are just gonna keep going up. I think I will also say, I don't wanna just avoid cuts. There are some really amazing things happening, a lot of amazing things happening in this district. And I think we need to lean into some of those and not be afraid to put some funding around them. And I don't think it can just be status quo. I think, you know, I'd love it if, you know, I could wave that magic wand and we'd have all the things back that we've already cut. But I also think we're gonna need to have to take a really hard look at what we did cut and what are the ramifications of it. Because this district report card was great, but it's a lagging indicator. And, and there are things that we took out that we're probably gonna feel a few years from now. And I'm fearful to cut or make a number too small because we hand... And I'm fearful to cut or make a number too small because we handcuffed ourselves for the future.
It's funny that you said, two is, two is that, you know, two feels palatable, three is what we need. And I was kind of leaning at 2.5. It's like, I feel like that's where, when I look at these budgets across time, and that still is going to require us to make cuts in the future, right? That still is not certainly what we need. And I think I agree with you, I'm leaning towards a recurring just because we've had years and years of data that says that this isn't changing.
Right.
And again, it doesn't, I know it's not enough. When I look at the project, you know, projections, it's clearly, there's still significant cuts that need to be made. And I feel like that's at least a move in the right direction. So I guess that's kind of where I was at after hearing all of this. And I also agree that I don't want to see cuts that we talked about. I would hate to see those things happen because they're all critical.
I agree with Nikki and Teresa, that 2.5 was the zone I was kind of thinking of. And I don't know if I'm on board with the step up because I am afraid of the cliff and going back down. But it would, I guess my ultimate would be start at 2.5 and ramp up to three, three and a half as depending on how long the timeframe goes. If we could get a six-year up to the 3.5, I think that would be the one that covers most of what we need was still balancing, you know, the community support while doing our part in making cuts as well to keep things balanced.
I guess I'm kind of in that same group mindset, you know. I, 2 million is kind of what I was thinking. But I mean, thank you to Ron and Joe both for putting this, these numbers down on black and white, you know, to make it more understandable because school financing is crazy, to say the least. I'm learning every day, but I mean, it's just, it's so convoluted the way they fund schools. And, you know, this all basically goes back to the legislature. I mean, and you guys have stated, you know, they haven't changed anything for 20, 30 years. Maybe they did want the school districts to operate a little bit more for, you know, be more fiscally responsible, act like, more like a business like. And I, but I think if you look at this district, we've cut in almost 2.5 million dollars in the last four years. I mean, they have squeezed and it's, you know, sure, we lost 200 kids in the last 20 years, but not to that point, you know. I mean, we've scraped down. I appreciate the fact, you know, Joe said that maybe it's a combination. Maybe there are going to be some reductions, you know. There should be, as long as our enrollment continues to decline, we should keep looking at the numbers, you know. And we have to do that every day. And occasionally, there's going to be places where we can, we can cut something. But I mean, we can't just take it, ax everything and just, I mean, it's going to really affect the kids because I agree, you know, that the school rankings have gotten up. And that's a, that's a really positive. But that said, I mean, these cuts that we're talking about, if this referendum fails, I don't see those scores continuing to decline. Because there's going to be some kids that are going to start suffering. It's kind of where I'm at. I'm, I'm kind of, I don't really think of reoccurring. I'm not in favor of reoccurring one for the simple fact that, you know, forever is a long time. And I think at some point, the state legislature has got to change the way they've funded schools. This can't continue at this pace. I mean, 20 years ago, there wasn't, what was it, 81% of the school district ran a referendum? That didn't happen 20 years ago, you know. I mean, the need is there now and that's their only option, either that or close the school. And, you know, you may see some school consolidations, you know, down the line from this. But, I mean, if the state's intent was to make the school districts' pincher pennies a little closer, I think they've gotten there.
I think you're really right there, Steve, in the sense that, you know, with any system, when those reductions happen or when the funding revenue stream tightens, right? We all looked to make the easiest cuts first, right? And there's always areas that we could look at and that many districts did. And you are 100% right in the fact that, you know, 15, 20 years ago, there might have been, yeah, probably 20 years ago, there might have been 15 to 20% of districts that were having to run the question. And then it's just ramped up not only in the amount of districts that are asking questions, but the amount of districts who are now in their multiple iterations of having to run referendum cycles. I've said it since the first time I ever ran one of these questions. And, you know, sorry, I was saying it before I came to this district and certainly the first referendum I ran in this district. People are like, so what, if you get these monies, are you good? And I said, no. Look at, look at that growth because it was already growing then. It wasn't nearly as big as it was. You don't ever come out of that, right? You're always going to have to be coming back and/or asking for more dollars because unless they get to a point where they truly are funding education at a point where the revenue limit is keeping up with inflation, you're going to constantly get further and further behind. And so there's no way to not have to come back. And so you're right, this wasn't, this wasn't as big of a problem 20 years ago. It's been an accumulation effect on districts over time.
Well, you want to share or you want me to go?
I'll share. I think recurring is kind of a pill to swallow, recurring meaning it's perpetuity, you know, for taxpayers in general. So I think I would lean more towards nonrecurring and thinking four years, we catch another biennial budget process. Is that right, Ron?
Yeah.
Beyond the one that we're in now. I think even with, you know, anticipated further cuts that we can do, the chill line here, Ron, in your worksheet, maybe 200,000 to 300,000 per year, you know, keep up the good work. I still think that puts us in a position where it'd be a four-year nonrecurring, 2.5 million year one and two, 3.4 million year three and four. Otherwise, we're just eroding our fund balance even more precariously from where it is now. And then I think as a taxpayer, I, I think that allows us to get through another biennial budget process, reevaluate three years from now where we're at with our finances. And I would much more favor a nonrecurring over recurring. I think that's just kind of an open checkbook kind of mentality or perception. You go, Jim.
Yeah. Thanks for passing the mic, Phil. First, I just want to say a huge thank you, kind of echoing the gratitude from other, other board members, both for the presentation tonight and the financials and the reduction list, but also all the steps that have gone into this for our principals and staff to kind of hold people through this. You know, it's just, it's massively challenging. So I just want to say a huge thank you to everybody who's, you know, playing such a huge role there. Second, I just think, you know, I shared this a couple of months ago with the staff, but I think the return on investment that Monroe taxpayers are getting through Monroe Public Schools is second to none. I mean, it's just, if you look at the growth that we heard about tonight, combined with the efficiency metrics that we've all seen, and also just, the job of being a classroom teacher, being a good classroom teacher, I think is the hardest job out there. And every one of the cuts that's on this list over the past four years, none of these are a logical one-to-one, if we lose 20 kids, then we do this thing, right? And so it's our staff, it's our admin who are in here tonight, it's our teaching staff, our classified staff, who are every year picking up this additional burden, making their job harder, less sustainable, while also improving the student experience and student results. And I just think that's a heroic act, to be honest. So when it gets to the question where my head is at, I'm feeling compelled by what a few different people shared here tonight. Coming in, I was thinking 2.75 and my thinking being, essentially that gets us a reset. It doesn't cover the full gap that's up on the screen. That would be, you know, $6 million, right, to fully catch us up to inflationary costs. But at least that would say, that would bring us to a point, if you look at the budget projection, that we could, we could then continue with our current programming, making adjustments for enrollment over the next several years. That's logically where my head is at. It doesn't get us everything that we need financially, but that was where my mind is. I can be compelled by what you shared, Phil. And I think on the recurring, nonrecurring, I'll be honest, I'm torn on this. And I'd really, I'd ask administration and other board members to, like, this is, the next couple of weeks is when we should be putting our feelers out to get feedback from folks. Because there's just, there's no way, even if we did a survey, which we're not going to do, but even if we did a survey, to be able to predict, what I'm worried about, similar to Phil, I think even to somebody who's very supportive of public schools, a recurring referendum would have been hard for me to stomach before I got on the board. It just would have been. And so I worry that we, you know, potentially shoot ourselves in the foot by going for that. It's just, it's a complicated thing, to Steve's point, to get people really fully on board with the way that it's taken me, you know, however long being on the board to really come to terms with. I think that's what we should do. I don't know if we can pass it. And so I would ask a couple of things. One, I would ask every board member and even other, other members of our staff to get, get feedback, get some sense for kind of where folks at on this. I'd ask administration to maybe talk to other, other districts who are going through the same process, right? Like, what are they hearing, what are they seeing? Just for us to get a little bit of a more informed landscape next time around. Because honestly, I'm torn on that, on that element.
Just to add to that, we do have the December 3 community listening session. That'll be a great opportunity for people, both, you know, people that are in support and people that have questions and concerns. I think we want to hear from everyone. Joe, Ron, anything else? Any follow-up questions for the, for the board or?
I just appreciate the discussion. I know, you know, as someone, you know, a lot of you are going to look to me and lean on me for a recommendation and, you know, I just need to have a little perspective of what all of you are thinking and where your heads are at so that it'll help Joe and I work through that process. Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, the only other thing I would add is, you know, if there's people watching from home, we've shared some numbers, we've got some decisions to make. I understand there's going to be some people that have wide eyes when they, they see the numbers and hear these things and we don't, we don't throw them around lightly. We recognize that there's a lot of folks that are struggling right now and need to make tough decisions about their households and their futures. And please know that we take all of that into consideration. But, you know, I honestly believe that this is a critical time for our school district because it's going to determine the future of our schools and our community and what we're able to offer here. And so we will, I promise it, we will do everything we can to make sure that we make the best decision possible and try to honor the feedback that we hear in the community.
And Joe mentioned it earlier, but, you know, this was obviously an impactful and difficult topic for a lot of our staff. And so, you know, the fact that our staff has, you know, that you didn't see a bunch of people marching on the board meeting tonight, they understand what this means for our district and the impact that this has for our students. But they also have been very respectful of the process. And I guess I appreciate them and their understanding in this very difficult time, so.
That's one of the things I'd like to add too, is just thank you for the way it was handled. Very professional, very set. There's no way that I would have wanted to do that. I mean, I've done some of that, but that's been years and years ago. But it wasn't fun then, but it was a very difficult job, very, very difficult. So really appreciate it. Thank you. Thank you.
And just one, one last note on this before I move us on. Yeah, I've had several people in the community who are generally kind of supportive of our school district kind of say like, hey, you should be, you should be saying that you're going to cut the things that are going to mobilize people the most. And I think as a, as a board, and especially with, with Joe and Ron, we've had that discussion early to say, there is a choice point. You could try to make this, just whatever is politically going to be as successful as possible. And what Joe framed, and I would just echo that, that I feel confident speaking on behalf of the board here, like, this is a, we are not doing that. This is, this is the best of the worst scenarios that we have. This is if the referendum does not pass, this is the plan. There's no, like Joe said, there's no scare tactics here. This is, this is what we got. We made that commitment early on and we're sticking to it. So I just want to say thanks for that. With that, I'm going to move us on. Informational items, boardmanship, administration, anything else you want to add?
I mentioned the December 3 community listening session. Just want to, you know, reiterate that we would love to see great attendance from the community there. We absolutely do want to hear from folks and look forward to that event.
And the only thing from, from my end, so we talked about this a little bit this morning, Joe and I did, and Teresa. So we've got a conflict on January 12th, so we're going to be in touch with the board to reschedule the first board meeting in January. So I know that shakes up the timeline a little bit, but we'll make sure that we get a time that works for hopefully as much notice. It's not a big burden for our administrators, especially for the student wards and everything. But one day we'll be, we'll be working on that, so board members, and we'll look out. Okay, Board of Education correspondence, everything that we have gotten as a board has been responded to. Looks to close there, liaison reports.
I just would like to say, we appreciate the transparency of the board and administrators as to what the plan would be going forward.
Committee reports. Nicole.
We've got the EIE Steak and Shake coming up real soon. Can we still buy tickets from you at the DAC? Okay. That's December 6th.
December 6th, yes.
So not this Saturday to the following Saturday. Yep, okay, yeah, coming up quick.
Thanks.
I'm done.
Finance committee met tonight for the BOE meeting. October financials were reviewed. I also wanted to mention that I was able with some other board members to do mock interviews at MHS last week. Great program, great kids.
Thanks for doing that.
Courtney will meet before the first meeting in December, before our next meeting.
Just one note from me. I attended the multicultural family night at the, at the high school. I don't know what night that was, but it was sometime in the last few days. And just want to say thank you to all the staff who put that together. It was a packed house in the LMC at the, at the high school and just felt like a really important event and important, important time in our city. So thanks to everybody who attended and those who put forth the effort to put it together. Any agenda items for future discussion? Five minutes for the press. Skip that. With that, I've got 9:28-ish.
Motion to adjourn.
Yeah, motion by Teresa, second by Mike. On paper, say aye. Aye, opposed nay, motion carries. Meeting is adjourned. Thanks, everybody.